Yeah, you can see it.
I would like to reconvene meeting at six nineteen P M. Could I get a motion to reconvene?
Tell me the motion.
Could I get seconded? Anything on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hand it down, the motion has passed. Quickly please, all rise for the pledge allegiance.
When we do this to the land of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
Bernadette, do we have any couple comments?
We did not.
Anybody from the floor, do we have any couple comments? Hey. Hey, right now, I would like to go to the reports, the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five year at the glance presentation by the administrative team.
Clicking, clicking, you're good.
Clicking and I'm starting? Alright, we can. Alright, good evening everybody. So here we are, June. It's amazing how quickly it seems to go by, but the last couple of years, what we've been trying to do is highlight those things that are happening in each of our buildings and in each of our programs. So if you remember the format last year, we each had a couple of slides and at the elementary building just highlights some of those things that kind of tied to beginning of the year goals and initiatives and kind of how they kind of played out. And also for us, we wanted to kind of acknowledge and emphasize a couple that really stand out and we're really proud of. So we have a couple of other teachers in the audience that we're going to ask to also come up and share a little bit about an experience with one of our committees. But as you can see up here, again, student-based, computer-based testing three through five. A few years back, we started with just two grades. Last year, we went to all grades, three, four, and five in the elementary building. We did that again this year. The one thing that I did notice as I circulated is a lot more familiarity as far as teachers knowing how it works, a lot more confidence, and that really poured over into our students' lives. Students interact with the computers, knowing how to be able to use the tools that come along with that. It gives them a sense that there's a lot more comfort in doing that. So I'm hoping that is something that is going to pay off when we get our results back. Vocabulary was a big initiative that I had taken. We've used our morning announcements to continue being presenting at least two words a week per grade level. We've continued to do that. Students, if they, you know, some of them are really religious about this is that they wait for me to say it and then they do definition cards. They turn a mandarin to be able to do that. This year, what I noticed is that we've moved beyond words. It's great that you're learning the words, but some of the students, one day just picked a poem to put out there around the morning announcements and some of the other students coming up and passing by, even our kindergarters and first graders, they're doing really well with the reading horizons program, started reading the chart out in front of the office. So that has become something. So it's just funny how little things like that are catchy and to watch the students stand out in front of the main office and read the chart is something that we have come to enjoy and hopefully be able to do it even more often next year. Again, successful evenings, open house, it goes really well. Having a couple of days to start off the year, I think has made a huge difference. It gives us time to be able to really dedicate time to each of the grade levels, but also the P T A, we know this year's been a big change with membership, but they again sponsor game night, bingo for books, special persons night. If you weren't there, it would be hard to believe because I know the line is long, but it wrapped around the small playground and it went down the sidewalk. And I don't know where it ended, but it was an hour long and we did not commit thirty-five minutes to get everybody in the building. I think Meg and Jerry probably had something to do with it and they probably made out really well. But again, it's just such a great turnout. It was the first time for Meg to see it and I was like, wait till you see this. And sure enough, it did not disappoint. Twenty twenty-five, no place for hate, gold award recipient. I emphasize four because anything less than four, you are, you're recognized, but you don't get a gold award. This is the second year in a row that I am aware of that we've reached that, which means that we've done four or more anti-bullying activities. We did four, but I think the biggest thing that that committee emphasized is that the kids are so much more engaged in it. Last year, we had twenty-one students. Allison thinks that twenty-two this year, so yeah, okay, one more student. But they met a lot more often. They were meeting monthly and they were actively planning and facilitating activities. And the culminating piece that they're tying to is what we do up here at the high school where we get, you know, another really large crack. What is the name of the event? I'm going to forget what it is. International one. It's amazing. I mean, every room is built to be expanded over. I know Dr. Stevens loved it. We moved some of the, some of the room over into the small, small gym. Yeah, he loved that. But again, it's just something that our community really looks forward to. But again, to emphasize the kids are involved in that and they're the ones that are doing some of the planning and I think that's exactly where we want to continue to go. Diversity, equity, and inclusion. This is a committee that has been really adult-driven. I had an experience with just a little bit more where there were three young ladies that kept coming out of one of the classrooms and they always had to bring something to my attention. And the more I listened and the more I prompted them to give you more information, it's really about being recognized and recognizing differences. One of the young ladies in the class is Chinese and you could tell that she, she definitely wore it in her body language each and every day, like how she felt about being in our school. And you could see that's where she was going. How come we don't learn more about this? And how come we don't talk about this? And how come we don't do that? So it was an opportunity to be able to bring those three young ladies up to our committee and sit back and listen to them. And the adults sat, we listened to them for at least a half an hour, them talking about what they wanted to come from this. And they, they want exactly what we want. We want to recognize not only our community, we want to recognize differences and we want to have, have opportunity to be able to celebrate that. So like I said, there's going to be a few people to stand up in a minute. Mrs. Massett, Mrs. Lance, and Mrs. Segouin are going to talk a lot about that committee and kind of what that has culminated into. Beyond that, strengthen the P B I S program with character awards. We've always done, not always, but the last few years, parades. We've included crowns for the younger students, bracelets for the older students, certificates that go home, but we also added to our school store. Now, it's great that we have a school store. Our students can trade in tokens to be able to pick up little knickknacky things. But the thing that has really caught fire and we had our first karaoke night, but we've started to offer things that are more of an experience. If we really listen to what the kids are looking for, they're looking for more of that experience. So we've added movie nights. We've had a couple of movie, movie nights, we've broken down by grade. We've had good participation, kids get to come after. I don't know if they'll remember the movie, but they will remember the experience being up in the library, getting a bag of popcorn, sitting with friends and being able to take the bus home. Same thing with karaoke night. How many students did we have present?
Yeah, I think we had, I think we had twenty-three. But oh my gosh, it was, it was so great. They were all into it. They were all singing along with every single song. They were so supportive of each other. So we're definitely going to do that again this year.
My assistant principal stopped me with making phone calls home to parents while she went to karaoke night. So I think I missed out on that. But there's one young man that does come in and somebody videotaped him and he came down to the office and I mean, he was beaming. Not only was he beaming, he did really well.
He did.
So I think he might have a future in singing. What else? Lunch, they have choices now of lunch with a teacher, read to a younger student. Again, just those lasting experiences, things they'll remember. Extracurricular clubs, we have a ton of them. Last year, if you remember, we had twenty-four students that participated in the Just Run Club. We had fifty-four this year. So I mean, that has really caught fire and unfortunately, forty of them were able to get permission from parents to travel to, what did it go? Mohanison. And we ended up having that rain out. So forty-plus students got on that bus. They were going over there. A lot of parents were going to be over there, but unfortunately, it got rained out and the rain date ended up being on the day, ended the year where we have a lot of other events. So a lot of the people that were helping with being able to do chaperoning and students and field trips, it just didn't play out. But the kids were excited and they're looking forward to doing it again next year. Continue to strengthen the restorative justice program. We were fortunate to pick up one of our own. I call her one of our own, but Ms. Marian Beche being up there, really great. She has that T A experience, but she knows a lot of our students and our families. So it's great when you're facilitating conversations about what are you doing? What could you be doing differently? How to fix it? Helping Meg be able to carry out those projects. And we started two years ago with an average daily attendance of ninety point seven eight percent twenty twenty-three and we got it up to ninety-two point seven this year. Eh, a little lower, ninety-two point three, but we were kind of hanging in there. I really do feel like we had a couple of down months. I don't know if you remember, it seems like the year's been forever, but around that December, January, we had a lot of absences and they were from students and families that typically are in school. So I think that had a lot to do with it. Otherwise, I think we would have been a little bit above that ninety-two point seven. So that's kind of a summary, but I want to invite Mrs. Lance, Mrs. Segouin with Mrs. Massett and kind of just run through what our diversity, equity, and inclusion committee has been doing and things that we do on a daily basis.
So I'll just pick up where Mr. Groot left off. As you said, this is inspired by every student kind of coming to him and talking about what they wanted to see. So in our conversation, we came up with this idea of a monthly newsletter. So a lot of goals with this, but really, like Mr. Rose said, for students to see themselves in some of what we're doing in the building, to educate other, you know, other, all the student body and teachers as well about, you know, some of the areas maybe they're not always in tune with and really to build that sense of belonging for all the backgrounds. We have such a diverse school and district. So to really build that up, our audience really is students, classrooms, and families. I do now add it to the, the building newsletter, so anybody can access it. But really, we're trying to encourage classroom teachers to hone in on some of the activities. So I mean, you'll see, we're each going to talk about a different section of it. We have different areas of our newsletter. I'm actually just going to pull up the last one so that, so that you can see it live. Alright, so the first section I'll kind of talk about is the cultural events. So we kind of go through as a committee, we go through each month and we try to pull the ones that we want to highlight for everybody to learn about. So there's a lot of cultural education within this. You know, a lot of these are events that our students celebrate. So we're trying to really build that up and build awareness in our building and then we'll kind of talk about it on the morning announcements. We'll go into depth a little bit more. And then, you know, usually we highlight a special area. Maybe we talked about Mother's Day, but everybody who's in caring roles to include, you know, everybody who kind of plays that role in students' lives. I'm going to pass it off to Mrs. Lance.
And I'm just going to go on this slide.
Yes.
So this newsletter, Meg actually, I believe, came up with this title, One School, Many Stories, and we absolutely love that title for the newsletter. We think it fits our school really well. And designing this newsletter has actually been a lot of fun for our committee. Our committee is actually a pretty small committee and we just kind of divide and conquer and we choose a video for the month to represent the word of the month. And I believe for May, I believe, we were focusing on friendship. So the job was to find a really great video about friendship and then Mr. Groot and Mrs. Massett would play it during the morning announcements. They'd play one piece at a time so that the kids could see part of the video. And then it was our job to finish the video in the classroom. So it's a lot of fun to find those videos. Sometimes they're Pixar videos without any conversation at all and those are the ones that really entreat the kids. And I, I noticed for the month of June, for the word acceptance, the video did not have any words at all and we could watch Mr. Groot and Mrs. Massett on the big screen while we were watching morning announcements. Someone grossed the video waiting to see what was going to happen. And then the kids were like, oh, this is so cool. So they really enjoy that. So we love doing the video. And then we have a section for the word of the month and then we all work together to what does this word look like? And so for friendship, it looks like when you're spending time with someone and they enjoy spending time with you. It's used in a sentence and there's also it sounds like, so that it is phonetically spelled out. So if the boys and girls are having a hard time understanding the word, it's easier for them if mom and dad are reading the newsletter with them to help them to sound out the word. And then, I think I need to go there. And then we also add a craft of the month. So for the month of May, we did this friendship fruit salad, which we used with part of our friendship day where we mixed up all of the kids on grade level and talked about what it means to be a great friend. The younger kids did a friendship crown. We did a friendship fruit salad. Later, when we go back to the other slideshow, we'll talk a little bit more about a craft that we did for February with Chinese New Year, how we incorporated a bunch of different activities. And then with that, I'm going to switch her to Mrs. Segouin.
Yeah, so every month, we have our word of the month. We do a read aloud, so we pick a book for the month. We volunteer a person. Usually like Mr. Stevens has done them, Kirsten's done one, Ryan's done one. We, you know, we invite people, if you want to volunteer to be our book of the month next year, great. You read aloud a story for the month and then that's posted here too. And the kids watch that story that has to do with our word of the month. And we work hard finding one that relates to the kids. I personally love reading picture books, even to the older kids. They're really engaging. I work really hard on our book list for the month. I try to find different age levels for our book list. We always have, I've even started adding little notes as to the origin. I look for different origins for different stories, different backgrounds, different students that might be interested, different age levels. The one on friendship, I was really proud I found one where the student's friend was their grandmother, which I thought was a great background to give somebody because sometimes the kids are spending time with grandma. So, you know, so now we were lucky to talk to Allison. We get the, I, we have a little wish list going of books that we want to start to build a library. But Jeff Senical helps me with like our book list. So like, we all kind of pitch in and add things in our little meetings and if anybody sees something good and then, you know, our read aloud is really important. So we share all this out and, you know, it's available for our teachers. Again, they're looking for something to read on that month. They can pop into the book list and find something and hopefully we'll start building our library at school, so they'll be easy to grab, better than online.
Absolutely. Yeah. And when you look at that last picture, so one of the things that we do is we find a craft for the month.
My fifth grade and third grade.
An idea, either a culture idea or maybe the word of the month. And so we have buddy classrooms. So my third grade classroom and a fifth grade classroom that Mrs. Segouin works in, we got together with our buddies and we created the paper lanterns for Chinese New Year and it was a lot of fun. So just kind of bringing it all together and like the newsletter is posted on everybody's Google classroom and we share it with our parents and it's just, it's been a lot of fun working on this today.
And just to wrap up, we have, we are partnering with No Place For Hate next year to do more, more student-involved activities, highlight more of our students in the newsletter. So that's our goal going forward.
And we actually hit our topic to be the name of our newsletter.
Yes, we did.
So that is our theme for next year, one school, many stories. So that's our focus.
Lot of ideas for next year.
Yes.
Yeah. Any questions?
Volunteers, right? Right, volunteers.
Why change?
I thought I was first.
Camera's saying.
Yeah, just stand in line.
I'm hearing about all the great things happening at the elementary school. Meg, great, great first year with the district. That was, you guys go. So we'll, we'll be as quick as possible. We have a lot of initiatives that are continuing up here at the junior, senior high school. We moved into, we continued with our younger, younger program and I remember while we sat in the rollout with our community forum and we talked about what a sea change this was for having no phones at school and we talked, you know, hopefully this will be helped by legislation from the state that will help enforce some of these things. And I don't think we thought that in year two, we would have that backing. So it feels good to feel that we're ahead of the game when we are limiting technology in our schools and our kids are doing a pretty good job of keeping, keeping phones out of the classroom. It's not a perfect system, we all know that. But instruction is up and distraction is down and that's the whole, the whole point of it. We continued our staff mentoring, staff student mentoring program, six through twelve, that means monthly. We were just talking today about how we can revamp that and maybe even more effective next year, but it's certainly an endeavor or a program that we want to see continue. Rolled out Can Your Culture for the third year in a row where we celebrate twelve junior high students monthly. It's, it's one of the best days of the year, best days of the month. Celebrate the kids, put on a, an assembly and send out the parent square to the six through eight parents. Kids love it. We have our P B I S program with the Faust funds and the Faust, Faust finds in the, in the school store, which is obviously our, our way of, you know, promoting positive behaviors and celebrating the kids in, in different ways, keeping things off referrals and doing things in a, in a more creative, restorative way. I told Mr. Demento that we, we have to be more creative. We try to keep some of the little candies out of there. Turns things into tchotchkes or some incentives, homework coupons. Get a little bit more creative in how to celebrate kids and, and reward kids. We had three junior high dances this year, Halloween dance, winter snowball, spring luau, all really well attended, put on by the staff in the cafeteria, which was great because we get to introduce our, our junior high kids to some of those extracurricular events. Fun Friday put on by Can Your Clubs, those usually went in hand in hand with Can Your Culture, monthly assemblies. We had a great fifth grade transition night again this year. Great turnout from the fifth grade. Thank you elementary folks for, for pushing that out. We're going to have a great sixth grade transition, excuse me, orientation in the beginning of the, of the school year in late August. And actually, last, last kind of second thing, we had some really relentless teachers from the, from the, from the junior high who were new to the district and said, hey, you know, I know there's not an eighth grade graduation, they're, they're just going upstairs. Is there anything we do? And we brought back the, the eighth grade class trip. We did some fundraising and made that happen, all free of charge to the kids. And it's not exactly how we wanted to plan and roll it out, but it's, it's an endeavor that we're proud of and just another way to celebrate our kids and, and recognize them. P T A was up at the junior, senior high school for year two, which was great because now we have that initiative that can cover all grades, K through twelve. We honored our, our honor roll kids with outings and field trips. We had forty-three kids get inducted to National Junior Honor Society and National Honor Society this year. And we celebrated some of our students at the Capital Region Poetry Slam, Empire State Plaza Art Show, which attributes to all the good things of Miss Santiago doing in her classroom. And we had our band participate in the city's annual memorial day parade.
We also had our band and chorus go back to Great Escape this year. This is the second year in a row for Trills and Thrills and they once again scored superior. So we know that they are doing very, very well. Also in our music department, we had another year of our community showcase, which was last Friday. We have winter and spring concerts, so we're really building up those. We had a lot of post-high school presentations today. Thank you to Ms. LaFouris. Today, we had the near state department of civil service come in and talk to our students about what positions are available, how to look for those positions, what the hiring requirements might be, how to look for all of those. So that was a nice opportunity for them. The college fair came, the trades, we've had them come in a couple of times and we have, I believe, an electrician coming in next week as well, or actually this week, to speak with our students as well. So we're looking at providing more information about post-high school plans for students who maybe are not interested in going directly to college. C V T testing up here, same as the elementary school. We started the first year with only one grade level and then we moved into everybody. So that was a very successful year, other than some glitches, which were not our faults, which is nice. Lots of athletic compliments this year. We know that our athletic program is running beautifully. We're in our second year of C L civic readiness. Social Studies Department is finishing that up. We're, we have fifteen students making that attempt. So this is an addition, a nice symbol, hopefully my wording, on their diploma and it's good for their applications to college, which is always a good addition and it's our second year, so it's nice to see our numbers growing. And then finally, we did just have our senior youth day. You can see Ms. York is there. What position did you go with?
Mayor.
Mayor. I always love this and I actually spoke with Mayor Dr. Sully and he said, I love how they dress up. And they do, they always go very professionally because there's a nice luncheon at the end. I walked around and I asked all the students like, what did you think? And they were very insightful, they provided me with a lot of information. And then I asked them how it connected with their future goals. So it was really nice to have them get those experiences and connect it to what they're looking at for the future. The biggest change for the high school this year, Mr. Lopez is going to speak to, and it's success.
Alright, so for the twenty-four, twenty-five recap, a big positive for this year has been the Character Ed rollout that we have been working with. So for the recap, we have the corner store, the Can Your Corner Store, the Believe Bucks, Review Bucks that we rolled out around the beginning of May. So for the Can Your Corner Store, if you can see, it's going to be on the next slide. You know, that's where students are able to cash in those Believe Bucks that they get for, since you guys are all so wonderful, you've each get a Believe Buck yourself.
Catching.
The store is open Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so don't go there Tuesdays and Thursdays. So this is becoming, the popularity for these is, is growing by the week. And, you know, students really, you, you see students that at the beginning weren't going up to the Can Your Store, maybe if they were shy or they weren't really earning, you know, the Believe Bucks. Now we're seeing like a more diverse group of students that are going up and, and cashing in these things. We just replenished the store. You know, it's got some small, you know, food items, but with the help of Ms. McAvoy and Ms. Sharp, we've been able to get some donations from people inside the building, community members. I forgot the business, but they gave us a hundred dollar check. Somebody, one of our teachers donated Apple earbuds and somebody also donated a bunch of those Stanley thermoses that are like seventy bucks or something. So we have those and we also have a Google or Alexa Echo, is that, I don't believe what it's called. So, so they have used these to purchase those things, but those high, the earbuds, we're actually going to be raffling those off to the kids that are coming to Regent's Review. So we wanted to help support our teachers for getting kids to want to come to Regent's Review. So instead of Believe Bucks, we had Review Bucks. And those were worth two instead of one. And what happens is Ms. McAvoy or Ms. Sharp, they talk to the teachers and whoever is attending these review sessions gets put on this digital wheel. And at the end of, or no, next Monday, which is the last day of classes during the morning announcements, we're going to poll two names and somebody's actually going to win the Apple earpod or earbuds and the Echo Dot. So we're going to raffle off those two big items. So I, I've seen the wheel, the, it's amazing how many names are on it already. They're like little tiny slivers, but kids really seem to be buying into it. The kids that are part of the Character Ed are the ones that operate the store. We're kind of just there as a supervisory role, so they're doing the exchanges with the students, you know, and, and we're hoping to grow on that even more by having students, you know, participate in advertising for the different fundraising attempts that we're looking to do for next year. So the kids in character nominations from the staff, again, that's something with the staff where identifying students that they felt were going above and beyond and that's a whole separate thing that we celebrate them with. And, and that's something, again, we're looking to continue to grow and work with next year. And kids in character community work, they did some work over the holiday break working with the chorus and going and helping out with some of the other lead homes and also singing Christmas carols. So, you know, they're definitely, it was a great first year to get that rolling, but we're really excited about what's going to be happening ahead. So for the next upcoming school year, we're looking to continue to support student-staff relationships. So the staff are nominating students, but we want, and, and you can probably see on the wall or down the hallway, we want students to not just recognize staff, you know, during one month. We want to start something that during the whole year, it's something that's a continuous thing. And I know staff feel really nice about it, makes them feel good. I happen to see my name on one and it's not to brag, but just to say like, it really does make you feel really good. And, you know, if you're having a rough day, it's not bad to just walk by and peek at it every once in a while. So the strength of this school's relationship with the city of the water league community. So we, you know, we did do the Christmas, you know, help with the elderly and with the chorus, but we want to do more of that, you know, not just during the holidays, but we want to try to get into the community more, but also bring that into the school. So if we're having different events, talk to some of our business owners, talk to, you know, some of the families and try to get them to start participating because, you know, there are some groups that do and it's great and we want to just continue to build upon that. try to get them to start participating, um, because, you know, there are some groups that do, and it's great, and we wanna just continue to build upon that. And then again, enhance the student-staff achievement recognition, shouting each other out, uh, working with communications to, you know, celebrate student success, celebrate staff success, uh, to the community. And I kinda went over the, you know, Cannonier Corner, here's a picture of some of the kids purchasing some things. You know, we acknowledge kids for acting like a cannonier, and also for attending the Regent's Reviews. Like I said, we had some great donors, um, and then for booking, uh, we also collaborated with the wonderful folks in the Food Services with Darryl, who really gave us great insight on food ordering, the proper food ordering, um, how to go about doing it, and then, um, you know, him sharing some cool ideas, you know, for things that we could purchase, and if we have an idea, we run it by him, and he's able to kind of be like, yeah, that's a great idea, or maybe you guys should think about that, so it's been a great partnership, or at least we thought so. Looking ahead for next year, uh, we're gonna be, we've, uh, thought of some great fundraising ideas. So, uh, we're looking to roll out those as soon as we get the, uh, school year rolling. We're streamlined product ordering and, uh, production, and by production, I mean like T-shirts or sweatshirts. Right now, Ms. Sharp has kind of been hampering her way at home with her little cricket, but we wanna start revving that up with maybe a local T-shirt business or something where we can get them mass-produced, that we don't have to worry about, you know, her slaving away on the weekends. Um, and then what we're also looking to do is the, enhancing the student responsibility, so turning this over more to them. Yes, they work on the exchange and all, and then kind of organizing it and, and things like that, but like I said, I want them taking ownership of, you know, connecting it to different things that they may do when they get out of high school, whether it's advertising, whether it's, you know, working with, uh, you know, money and currency and stocking and things like that. So we're looking to kind of elevate this even more, so, uh, I just wanna give a shout out to Ms. Sharp and Ms. McAvoy, they've been tremendous during all this, and they continue to play active roles in this.
Alright, Miss Shaw High School. Special education will be brief, um, just reflecting on this year, it was our first year of the Riverside Partnership, uh, where we partnered with Manan, Suppo, Water League, and Green Island to strengthen our special just kind of highlighted some of the things that we did up here. College tours, and where big conversations started with individuals, I met with the seniors, what are you interested in? What jobs, what does that look like, do you have a job now, do you have a, uh, do you drive, do you want to drive, do you have a bus pass? And just asking all the questions and knowing the kids and finding out where they want to go, and what steps do we need to take to get there. So kind of based on those answers, we did our college tours, so we toured five colleges this year, and about a hundred and fifteen students went with us. Some of them were counted multiple times, but they gave up multiple trips. Hudson Valley, we actually did twice, we did once, um, and Evolve as well, so sometimes it's Evolve, sometimes it's our students with disabilities, sometimes we bring everybody. We did the Uniquely Able Academy also at Hudson Valley, we had a kid test out the boot camp, it wasn't for her, but again, giving them opportunities to try different things. Schenectady County Community College, we have quite a, a lot of students who are interested in culinary, they have a great culinary program there, they have a great music program there. U Albany to see what a larger campus looks like, and then the EOC over in Troy, because that's free, it's a lot cheaper, it's a shorter program, it's easier to get into, and a couple of different opportunities for kids there. Additionally, we expanded our work-based learning opportunities here in this building, thanks to our kitchen staff as well. We had, uh, fifteen students doing some work-based learning hours in the kitchen or cafeteria, some of them went to a different level. They got certi, they are getting certificates the end of the year, that also highlights what they did, and they can use those lines from the certificate to add right onto their resumes, because building resumes can be difficult. We brought eight students to a farm to do some volunteer work, and we're also planning to expand that relationship next year. The Regional Food Bank has both the local bank and the farm, and it was a wonderful trip as well. And we had one student work on a little graphic design project for us, and we're hoping something that we can move, um, forward with, um, Ms. Stowen's class, the, uh, HVCC marketing class, so not all special ed, but so also reaching into the gen ed population as well. Additionally, this year, we had a career fair in March, we had twenty-six vendors, all of the students at the high school were able to come through. We had the Career Jam, which we brought another twenty seniors to another career event that was outside the district. And I also attend career events just to get more resources and to have people come in. Like Mrs. Williams mentioned, we had New York State Civil Service in, um, kind of linked some friends up with the RPI Engineering Ambassadors. And I've shared all my contacts with, again, with Ms. Stowen, and kind of went through that, also with Mr. Keena up in the Pivot Program, just to start making some connections, see how we can further develop that. Outside providers, especially for our graduating seniors, what kind of supports can they have after they leave? We have thirteen students who have been enrolled in access to our students, another sixteen students got hack-priced, uh, CDTA bus passes that are good for the next three years. We had four referrals for Cartwheel, which is a therapy service online, and another two are in the process to try and get OPWD services through local care organizations. Awesome, thank you Becky, as you can see, there's a high level of coordination to pair students up with the right services that are gonna help them maximize their success post-high school. Special education has a high level of accountability, both from the federal government and the state. We monitor our students with disabilities really closely, so this year, we were under review for Indicator thirteen, which is how are we supporting our students with disabilities to transition, um, which we were compliant, and we did great on that review. And this upcoming year, I'm gonna jump down to Indicator fourteen, they collect all of the student data, and then they survey students and families to check on their progress a- after graduation, so they really do keep track of the students after they graduate. We had some mandatory professional development for our students with disabilities regarding suspension rates, uh, specifically by race, and then we are being closely monitored for our student placements, making sure we're supporting our students in the least restrictive environment. So we've been doing a lot of work in these two areas. We have also had monthly middle school special education focus groups, because we are a school in need of improvement at that level, we've really been targeting how we're supporting our students with disabilities in grades six through eight. And then we recently just received a new, um, status from the federal government on some more things we need to monitor, so we'll be working on that in this year to come. Any questions on special education? Okay.
Here we go.
A very special. Here we go. Although Mrs. Webster couldn't be with us tonight, she, um, had a lot she needed to share, it's muted right now.
It's okay.
Hold on.
On the, at the bottom, Peter.
On the computer.
Can't even celebrate that until the, um, the ten mag.
I'm gonna start her over.
Hey, everyone, uh, I just wanna say a quick thank you for allowing me the flexibility to do this virtually tonight, uh, it is my Sunday, it's my birthday, but you can't even celebrate that until the, um, the ten Maggins Spring Choir and Band Concert, so appreciate the flexibility. I do wanna take a couple of minutes to highlight some of the great work that we've been doing this year, want to lead to close the achievement gap and ensure that all of our students are provided with academic, social, emotional opportunities for growth. So as you know, as part of our district improvement comprehensive plan, the D-SIP, we have partnered with a number of area, in, in national organizations, in an effort to help us and guide us. So, just to name a few, we've, uh, paired with the Thames Works early, that this year, we have paired with the Danielson Group, who our teacher evaluation work is modeled after, but one of our greatest partnerships has been with CASDA. And, uh, if, if you recall, we briefly mentioned in December that we invited CASDA in to help us do some third-party observations. These are not your typical forty-five minute observations, but rather, they're brief targeted visits, uh, with focus on student engagement, objectives, and evidence of learning. So, the first one took place in December, and then just this past May, eighth and ninth, we had our second visit, visit from CASDA. In combining CASDA's perspective with our own regularly scheduled administrative walkthroughs, as well as observations, we have been able to identify both strengths and areas for growth. These observations have helped us to design professional development that is directly responsive from these observations, which ultimately assist the teachers and are benefiting the students. So we've done a great deal of work with that aspect, but we have also been working with CASDA to reimage our multi-tiered system of support, which is MTSS. Many of you might be familiar, and let me just move ahead a slide, um, with RTI, Response to Intervention, which is what MTSS is formerly known as. MTSS, though, expands the framework to include not only academics, but that behavioral support, social and emotional supports. So if you take a look at the diagram on your right, that tiered model, that's the focus on academics. But then if you go ahead and you look at the umbrella on the left, that's the MTSS framework, which is now expanded beyond just academics, and is really focusing on the full spectrum of student needs. It includes behavioral support, family and community collaboration, a- and really understanding the whole child, so that we can, once again, very similar to those observations, drive professional development. It's much more comprehensive, and we are excited about reimaging that. Now, this reimagining, though, has not been simple, um, and that's why we pa, we partnered with CASDA. We have no shame in asking for help, um, or guidance if it's going to better our students. So, together with CASDA, we created a collaborative team, we have been able to identify student needs, we have been able to, um, create targeted interventions for our students, and then monitor their progress by collecting as much data as we possibly can. So because this process is so deeply data-driven, um, we want to make sure that all of our stakeholders, whether it be teachers, or support staff, or families, and even students, have access to this meaningful data, because we need it in order to do what's best for students. So, another partnership, and let me just move ahead a slide, is, um, with EduClimber. We recognize that we need one place to house all of this data, previous to working with EduClimber, I had four hundred spreadsheets going at once, and people were, they were ready to have my head because I kept, because they wanted one of the centralized locations. So we heard them, and we have been able to provide that. We have spent the better part of the last year onboarding EduClimber, which is just a data management platform specifically made for schools that houses all of this information. If you take a look at the picture on the left, that's kind of the central hub, that's what a student's individual profile looks like. And it has a plethora of information, it has assessment data, it has intervention, behavioral attendance, and it's presented through interactive charts and graphs that you can tag, and they open up, and there's even more information in there, so it's really great. And this allows educators to quickly identify trends, to monitor progress, and really to make informed decisions. So, those are just a couple of the partnerships that we've had, and, um, revisions that we've made this year. And I feel so confident that we're on the right path. The progress we've made through these strategic partnerships, through thoughtful planning, and a shared commitment to student success is, has, has been wonderful and excites me for the future. Together, we're building a, a more responsive team, and we're looking at the whole child. So I'm proud of the work that we've done this year, I know we have a lot more work ahead of us, and that's okay, because we have a wonderful team of people that are ready to take this on, and we just wanna thank you, because we understand that none of this would be possible without our continued support. So, thank you very much. That is all I have, unfortunately, I'm not there this evening to answer any questions. So, Ms. Demento has helped in the onboarding EduClimber, if you have any specific, uh, questions for that. And if not, the rest of the administrative team has been part of the CASDA relationship in rolling out MTSS, uh, as well as those walkthroughs. So, please, you can call on anyone, um, but if not, have a great day, everyone, take care now.
Thanks, Cal.
You know, and then really, after the sixteenth take, I think she really got it.
That does bring us to the end of our presentation, does anyone have any questions on Kelly's component, because we would be happy to answer.
Or we can just go right to Kirsten's video.
Thank you all very much.
Sure, first off, uh, just a thank you to the administrators for putting together kind of a wrap-up, uh, of a review of the year. Lots of those initiatives tie directly to our four goals, but they also tie to what's best for students, and that's what we're all in this game for, is to do what's best for kids. So thank you for putting in that work and, and showing off a little bit of what we do behind the scenes. In a little while, you're going to be, uh, voting on a resolution to accept Ms. Emeryson's retirement. She came in a little late with her paperwork, but she has decided to retire, so we thank her for all of her years of service, she's not with us tonight, but we'll make sure she hears that next week at the, uh, retirement party, I hear, that's being planned. I also got in the mail, uh, some information from NISBA. Congratulations to Board Member Ms. Donnelly for being recognized for something with professional development level one, Board Achievement Award from NISBA, for Board Excellence. Sure, Judy, I'll take a picture of you while we're submitting it later.
She might need another earbuds.
What else on my list? As we get, before we get to the end of the year, just a quick, just a quick thank you to all of the board who have participated in a variety of things over the last month and a half, from the concerts, the Honor Society induction, the athletic awards. They might have been long, but it was great to see the cafeteria filled with students and families that were recognizing their achievements for, for the year in athletics, so thank you for participating in those, hopefully you are able to, uh, get some joy of seeing how our students have, have done throughout the year. And we have a little more, so make sure that you mark your calendars and join us for UPK Celebration, the last week of school, the fifth grade moving up ceremony on the twenty-sixth, and, uh, graduation, uh, for the class of twenty-twenty-five on, uh, Friday, June twenty-seventh. We're going to meet at five-thirty in my office for a picture prior to go down to graduation at six o'clock. Other than that, it's just a reminder that we do have the reorganizational meeting around the corner on July first. Little bit of a calendar change, so make sure you mark your calendar and join us for that. And it's been a terrific school year, so I'm hoping for a strong ending these last couple of weeks. And we look forward to all of the accomplishments of our students and moving ahead to the upcoming school year.
Dr. Stevens, what time are we meeting on the first?
Six o'clock.
Ms. York, would you like to, um, give us the student council report?
Yeah. I'd be so excited. We would like to thank Mayor Patrick Selle, Ms. Jitin Hughes, and all of the City of Water League officials who hosted us for Youth Day on May twenty-ninth. We learned a lot about who works with the city and what their responsibilities are, we got a tour of the police station and the fire station, and they gave us a very nice lunch. And I enjoyed it a lot, especially the chicken wings. And all of us in the senior class are looking forward to the next couple of weeks with Senior Day on Monday and graduation on Friday the twenty-seventh. Finally, speaking for Sophie, Owen, and myself, we would like to thank Dr. Stevens, Mr. Whitehead, and the, oh, Mrs. Whitehead, I'm sorry. Mrs. Whitehead and the entire Board of Education for allowing us to have a seat at the table throughout the entire twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five school year, thank you again. Thank you again.
I consider your future, you got me as Mrs. White in the element.
Can I just ask, what are you doing for Senior Day?
Oh, we're gonna do a lot. There's gonna be a barbecue and we're gonna, we're gonna have our senior sunset, we're watching the beach and we're gonna have like a bunch of work.
It's gonna be so fun. She's all about some food.
I want you guys to come. I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss this. Seems so sad. I don't want to be. And the, and the, um, the Youth Day, that was my favorite field trip like out of like all four years of living here. Like this is like my favorite year, my senior year.
We're gonna miss you.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you for participating all this time. Okay, moving on to committee reports, I have nothing to report from the Audit Committee. Heather, do you have anything for the policy to make?
Policy, we're gonna be on Wednesday, the eighteenth.
Thank you. Okay, the Board of Education discussions. The district level safety plan has been uploaded to the district website and will be available for public review on the website or in person for thirty days. A public hearing will be held at the August Board of Education meeting. If the public has any comments, they can also email to the email listed on the agenda. And more important comments, I got to attend quite a few things this past couple of weeks. The Honor Society, the, the sports banquet, which was great, Ms. Sharp, Ms. Dean, Ms. Dodd, Ms. Ford, the cafeteria staff, Mr. White. You guys did a great job. It was a little long, I have to say, but it was good, the kids had a lot. I also got to go to the, the spring concert and, which was adorable, as was the play at the elementary school. Even if I was the oldest one there, that, they're true rhymes, stories. Does anybody else from the board have anything they'd like to add?
I was just gonna say, basically, same thing you said. I think it was really nice that the athletic awards were a more formal event again. When we were in school here, it was a banquet and it was a ordeal. The last few years, I know probably due to COVID, it was less than formal and I think this was a really nice event. It was long, but it did acknowledge everybody and I think that that was really important.
The National Junior Honor Society was also an event that, I think the seriousness of it and the traditional aspects of it make it a really incredible thing to see and something for the kids to want to be a part of. So I wanted to thank Mr. Anderson for that because I thought that was a really nice thing as well.
The only other thing I wanted to say was, if you guys, if anybody has a chance to come up to the senior walkthrough at the elementary school or the fifth grade walkthrough, it's both events are awesome. I've gone to them, excuse me, for the past few years, they are really good events. If you have a chance, come up and watch.
I just want to say one more thing, I'm sorry.
The high school walkthrough for the high school students will be on Monday, the sixteenth.
Yes.
They will start that morning, roughly nine fifteen at the elementary school. The fifth grade walkthrough will be hard because they're going to walk through just before they come up to graduate, up to moving up on the twenty-sixth. So if you plan on attending Moving Up, then you need to be here for nine-thirty and it'll be hard to be in your seat for nine-thirty and watch them walk through at nine fifteen at the elementary school. But they're gonna walk through before they get on the bus to come up here for nine-thirty. Sorry.
That sounds like a challenge, like we can't.
It can be done. I did it last year.
You can try it. I am not going to try it.
I did it last year, I went to the walkthrough and then made it time for graduation as well, moving up as well. It can be done.
Now, once again, with the athletic, the way that was handled was great. Food barrel was outstanding. The way it ran, I know it was long, but I enjoyed watching all the kids get their awards. It was two and a half hours I thoroughly enjoyed. I know they might try to cut it a little bit, but I was very happy and proud to see the reaction to the kids' faces when they got their awards. They soaked us every week, needed, so it was a great night. Just want to thank Darryl and the staff that put that on and the school and Dr. Stevens.
Okay, personnel items. I'm going to ask for a motion for consent agenda on items one through seventeen and nineteen through thirty-five. Did I get a motion? I'll make a motion. But I have a second.
I'm sorry.
Anything on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion has passed. Item number eighteen, there with me because I can barely say. Resolve that upon recommendation of the superintendent, the board approved the probationary appointment of Molly Clark into the position of art teacher in the tenure area of visual arts at the Waterbury League Junior Senior High School, beginning September second, twenty-twenty-five, as step one salary as listed on the agenda. Could I get a motion? Could I get a second?
Oh, it's okay.
Anything on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unknown host? Hearing none? Motion has passed.
Congratulations.
Okay, I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn at seven sixty-eight PM. Could I get a motion? Sorry, did I get a second?
I'm sorry.
Brian? Anything on the motion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Hearing none? Motion has passed, the review is adjourned. Thank you all.